Thirty, so I think it's time to call this April 10th, 2023 meeting of the Concord Select Board to order. And the first order of business is because we do not have, oh, well, actually, we need to, because we're operating hybrid mode, we need to have everyone personally identify themselves. So, but very first thing, though, is a clerk pro tem. So can I get a motion to appoint clerk pro tem?
So moved.
Need to appoint a particular person.
You'd like, well, I'd be happy to appoint almost anybody else.
I'll do it. Yes.
Go ahead. Okay, so move to appoint Mary Hartman as clerk pro tem. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. I guess.
Oh, I should take the.
Might as well. Yeah, sure.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Okay, thank you. And then Linda, could you identify yourself as being present? I mean, you have, but yes.
Linda Escobedo, um, select board member present.
Okay.
Hi, Linda.
All right. So now let's move to approve the consent agenda.
I have questions on one of these items. Is this the time to ask that?
It would be.
Okay.
Well, we could.
Pull it off?
You could, yeah. Move without the item.
Okay. Um, then I guess I move to remove the gift acceptance from James Terry off of the consent agenda.
That we don't want to accept the gift?
No, I have a question. So I thought I had to take it off to ask a question, getting wrapped up.
Oh, no.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, the, um, the gift from James Terry, which is incredibly generous, it's to the QCD gift account. What, what is that?
So it is the, um, it's a qualified distribution account. It's, it's from a, um, a retirement account. I'm not sure why it's, it's noted as that. It's actually for sustainability efforts. You may recall at the 2022 annual town meeting, we had talked about, there was a warrant article that got pulled, um, well, not pulled, but it wasn't moved at the last minute because we were looking to set up a trust fund to receive distributions from, um, retirement accounts for people who wanted to make a direct contribution to the town, and it was tax advantaged for sustainability. Um, so it is for sustainability initiatives.
So this is just like a pass through account, or it's in lieu of the fact that we didn't set up?
Yeah, we, we decided not to set up a trust fund. It got very complicated and, um, we felt legally we were able to do everything that this particular donor wanted through a gift account. And, and so we set up that.
So it'll be, it'll be spent on sustainability efforts?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Terry.
All right.
So move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, roll call vote.
Um, Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
And special thanks to James Terry for that very generous gift.
Really?
Hey, now to the town manager's report.
Okay, thank you and good evening. The first order of business, I'd like to introduce Megan Zamudo to my right. She is our new deputy town manager. She's been with the town for a week now. Um, you all had the opportunity to meet her just before the, the meeting. She comes to us from a similar position from the town of Maynard, and prior to that, she worked for the town of Lexington. So, um, Megan's first, actually, her first assignment is she will be the interim director of planning and land management. She's working with the current director through her transition. Marsha is retiring on May 31st, and Megan will be, um, again, working with her and her team during, uh, Marsha's last weeks or so with the town, and, um, Megan will be preparing a, a transition report and making recommendations on the structure of planning and land management going forward.
Great, welcome.
Welcome, Megan.
Very much.
So Megan will be here off and on, not, not at every meeting, but she'll be a regular attendee at your meetings. Um, as I mentioned last week, we appointed Tom Mulcahy as police chief. Um, he has been with the town for 23 years, most recently as captain of the department and interim police chief, and he was sworn into his new position of police chief last Monday as well. Um, our light plan is celebrating its 125th anniversary this year. There were some events kicking that off last Friday. Um, Representative Cataldo presented a proclamation to the department, and there was an employee appreciation luncheon that we were able to attend last Friday. There's a note in here about all of the Patriots Day activities and a link to where you can find, anything you want to know about the town celebration related to Patriots Day. Uh, some notes from the fire department. The, the fire department was fortunate to receive access to a house, um, that was slated for demolition, and they were, they've been able to use that for training. This is a, something that, that comes up, um, not too, too often, but the department is extremely grateful when it has the opportunity to be able to, to use a building before it comes down as training. It really provides some valuable, um, training opportunities for the staff.
It has some benefits to the, um, developers and builders as well in terms of, they can donate, they can donate that building, but they cannot deduct the cost of demolition. So it works out very nicely.
Okay, um, so let's see, there, I was interested to read that we had an update on the Assabett River pedestrian bridge, but there wasn't a whole lot of information in, in that particular update. Uh, we did have a meeting last week with, with our staff, with the engineering consultant and the architect and mass DOT, um, so they were able to go over all, all of the different steps remaining in the, in the prog, um, in the project's, um, progression. So it's nice to see that it's moving forward, but, um.
Is it?
It.
At the snail's pace, or?
Um, you know, so, so it's, it's not yet slotted in a particular year of the transportation improvement plan, which is a five-year plan. I, I think hopefully within the next year, we will be knowing exactly which year it gets plugged into. A note that, um, we have begun to accept right-of-way permits. Uh, you may recall that we closed that during the winter months, so that was reopened on April 3rd, and we received 18 applications for right-of-way permits, most of which from National Grid. Now, we did our restriping of the town center. I think that was just yesterday that that happened. Taking bids on our crack ceiling program for 2023, we will be, um, covering about 10 and a half miles of, of street this spring and summer. Um, the, a note here, which may be new to you, in preparation of the town's 250th celebration, that we are looking at some improvements to the, the roadway pavement and pedestrian, uh, movement in Monument Square. Uh, so there's some information about that in there. Um, the recreation department events, the survey, recreation survey is still open until April 14th. Um, a note about the award of the Maureen Taggart Community Service Award. This is a scholarship that's awarded on an annual basis to a high school senior. Uh, the nice thing about this is the senior receives a scholarship and then is also able to identify a charity that receives the same amount in a scholarship. So this year's recipient is Christina Crowley and her charity of choice is Open Table. Just two other things that I wanted to mention. The Housing Roundtable is this Wednesday, April 12th, at seven at Harvey Wheeler. Various affordable housing projects and initiatives will be reviewed, and there'll be representation from the Affordable Housing Trust, the Housing Development Corporation, um, CHA, and the Housing Foundation, Select Board Planning Board, and Public Works Commission. And then finally, the DEI Commission is meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Harvey Wheeler, and one of their agenda items is to review the results of their survey. They had 625 or so respondents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
As far as the Housing Roundtable, is the select board expected to give a presentation?
We're expected to participate.
Yeah.
There are action items for us from the Housing Production Plan that we did review.
Okay.
With Keith Bergman.
Okay.
So, so we did get a little prep session.
Okay, so you're ready.
To go. Well, we all should be ready, and it is a noticed meeting, so we can call to order if we have a quorum and participate as a board.
I plan on attending.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, from the chair's remarks perspective, this week, we don't have an agenda item to deliberate on the, on the, um, form of the, uh, town manager evaluation, but I did want to note that, uh, I, uh, did some work based upon some feedback that I got and produced a second draft, which I'm now displaying on the screen. Um, I think it's also included in the latest draft of our, our packet.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, this is, like I say, the second draft at our, um, meeting at two weeks from tonight. I hope to be able to finalize the form of the evaluation. Again, we won't be conducting the evaluation yet until, you know, at, at the end of the fiscal year, but this was part of our goals as a select board this year, and so, um, I've done that work. So basically, the first sheet is, uh, the 30 goals that Carrie set for herself at the beginning of the year, and I've changed the, the, uh, criteria for, uh, evaluation, uh, to reflect that they are tasks that, you know, either got completed or not, and, or got completed well or not. And then, uh, the second page sheet is, if I can get it to go to the next sheet. I have to stop sharing for a second there. Oh, now that it did, it went twice, uh, is about, it's more the general leadership and governance and communication skills. These, um, are a condensed version of the questions that were in the prior evaluation, and so there are probably half as many questions as there were last time, uh, and they're all fit on one page now. And then finally, there's a sheet for you to enter any, you know, free text, uh, comments on performance. And then very key is the overall rating, and the reason I highlight that being very key is that, um, Carrie's contract, uh, does, uh, stipulate that, uh, you know, there is a bonus associated with, uh, or above satisfactory rating. So, um, and so again, we'll talk more about how to administer that, but, um, I thought that it'd be worth at least showing the form as it stands right now in draft and, uh, you know, soliciting feedback, um, as we approach the end of, uh, this term. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so now we're ready to.
I have a, I noticed something that the two proclamations are on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Does that mean we're not going to read them aloud?
Don't think we're going to read these here. I think that we will be making, uh, be reading at the event, like in the case of the Holocaust.
Right.
Remembrance, I will be attending.
Right.
On behalf of the town.
There's not going to be an event honoring Ken Miller?
Oh, but I don't think that we.
Do we?
Frequently, we do occasionally, um, if, if there's a request, uh, read the proclamations aloud, but we don't always. But I mean, if you'd like, we, we could.
I would like.
Okay, go ahead.
I have it in my, on my screen. Thank you. Yeah, I would like to read this proclamation. Um, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Concord Select Board Proclamation honoring Ken Miller and his commitment to improving Concord Trails. Whereas Ken Miller was one of the founding members of Concord Trails Committee in 2007, and whereas Ken was the Concord Trails Committee Chairperson until 2016, and whereas Ken was active in guiding Concord's Trail Network into a system of color-coded, blazed, and mapped walking trails through conservation areas, and whereas Ken contributed to the recruitment and deployment of volunteer stewards that initiated continuous vigilance of trail conditions and kept conditions to a more reliable, user-friendly state. Now therefore, we as the select board of the Town of Concord, Massachusetts, on behalf of Concord's employees, committees, community partners, and citizens, do hereby recognize Ken Miller for his service to the community for 16 years and for the foundation of a well-managed trail system in use today."
You're here.
Thank you, Mary.
And, uh, the trail network is one of the treasures of Concord.
It is. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're ready to, uh, invite Mike Lawson to the table to discuss the 250th American Revolution Anniversary Commission, the latest updates from that group. Mr. Lawson.
Mike Lawson, 1695 Lowell Road, member of the State's Commission to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, but speaking for myself. Firstly, there's been a change in, uh, the commission leadership. As a result of the elections, our representative, our co-chairs, uh, Carol Fiola and Senator Edward Kennedy were stepped down and were replaced by Representative Cindy Dome, uh, who represents the Hampshire District in Western Massachusetts, and Senator Paul Mark, who represents Berkshire, Hampton, Franklin, and Hampshire districts in the West. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for May 9th at 3:00 PM via the state's Zoom-like platform. I don't recall what it's called, but it's not an in-person meeting.
So those, those two chairs could not be further away from Concord.
That's right, they could not.
Right, exactly.
Unless they were in New York. The senator actually goes from the north to the south, right along the New York border. And I have not had a chance to meet either of them yet. So we'll get the agenda for this meeting a couple of days before, but I would like to read, if I could, a sentence from the co-chairs in a recent letter that they sent to the commission. Uh, quoting, "We are looking forward to ensuring a celebration worthy of Massachusetts' fundamental role in the revolution while promoting underrepresented voices and facilitating cross-Commonwealth celebrations." Now, I'll read that to you because essentially, that is the role of the commission, is to bring underrepresented voices to the table and figure out how to, uh, initiate and help start, uh, cross-Commonwealth kinds of anniversary, in particular in contrast with traditional celebrations that go on in our town and other towns along, uh, the Belt Road. The most recent activity the commission was through its subcommittees, three of which have been, have met within the last couple of weeks, and I'll very quickly summarize what, what they have done. The first is the Outreach and Marketing Subcommittee. They had a discussion of opportunities with the Mass Municipal Association and the Mass Historical Alliance, and are exploring upcoming marketing opportunities with the American Bus Association and Discover New England, and are working with 2023 interactions with subcommittees on diversity, inclusion, and education. The Education Subcommittee had two guest speakers, Lee Wright, the founder of the Pursuit of History, and Carrie Lund, the founder and executive director of Pursuit of History. I'd like to make a couple of additional comments if I could. Um, our, our representative, Mr. Cataldo and representative from Lexington, uh, Sokolo, both worked very hard to get marks in the budget for Concord for the upcoming fiscal year, and I'm sure you know that our Senator Mike Barrett has been particularly active both as our senator and as the chair of the Finance Subcommittee of the State 250th Commission. First, Senator Veras secured funding for Concord, Lincoln, and Lexington to support your 250th celebration efforts, and I believe Concord has already received the funds from that.
Yeah, the 200,000.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Secondly, he met with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll and Governor Healy to make them personally aware of the 250th anniversary and to argue for significant funding to be included in the governor's budget to support the celebration. He has, uh, argued for, uh, $2 million to be put in the budget, and we'll see, we'll see what, what happens to that. He is also, and it's particularly interesting because of, the commission gets money, it's, it's unclear exactly how, how the money would be administered, who would make decisions about it, very, very odd. So he has argued with the governor that the governor hire, essentially a full-time, experienced event management person, who would then be in charge of the funds that would be allocated through the governor's budget. I'm, I'm hopeful that that actually happens, uh, and I think, uh, Senator Vered is, uh, cautiously optimistic about it. Finally, I would like to recognize a group of representatives and senators that sponsored, the regulars are coming. I'm sure you must have heard about it. A joint planning meeting held in Lexington on March 24th was a very successful meeting, and our speakers, Lekman Dane and Jennifer Shuneman, who's chair of the Economic Vitality Committee, did an excellent job, both representing the town and explaining in the comprehensive planning the town has done. I have three things that I would like to say about going forward. First, just continue what you're doing. You're, you're doing a great job. When I talk to people from other towns, they always talk about what's happening here in Concord in terms of our level of organization and activity surrounded that. So I hope you will continue to pursue those, and I know you will, um, because I expect there'll be very little direct involvement from the commission, except for potential funding if it comes along. And with your permission, I would like a copy of the presentation that Ms. Shuneman made, so that I can, uh, present it to the commission and make it part of the formal record. I think it would be a good thing to show the rest of the representatives on this commission just what activity has happened here in Concord and how detailed our planning efforts have been. The third thing is just, I don't know how this is going to play out, but it's the one thing that, that would impact dramatically the efforts that are being made here in Concord, and that is whether or not any invitations to distinguished persons will be made and by whom. It has not come up except in sidebars with the commission, but I expect that it will come up at our next meeting or the next one. I think the invitations would likely be offered by the governor, but one, one doesn't know. And that's the only thing that I think would really sort of upend the planning that is happening here from a security point of view and a conjunction point of view. So if I learn anything, I'll let you know what's going on.
I mean, it complicates efforts somewhat. There's a federal election at the end of 2024. So you can't, you can't be certain who would be invited.
Well, you, you, you invite, you invite the office, you don't invite the person. And I don't know if somebody, I briefly, you might remember that I had put together a group of members of select boards from the various towns before we got, uh, Henry's Committee going. And during that time, I had talked with the British Councilor Office, and they were encouraging about inviting someone from Great Britain to represent, uh, represent them at the 250th. But nothing has come up formally on the commission yet, and if it does, it does, and.
Maybe we should make peace with King Charles.
So that's, uh, my brief report. I, as I said the last time I gave you a briefing, the commission is, meets somewhat regularly every few months, uh, but it doesn't seem to be driving any particular planning efforts that would impact on, on the town.
Oh, oh, questions from the board?
I have, I have a question. Um, thanks, thanks for that, Mike. Um, I was at the muster last weekend at Miriam's Corner, and one of the, um, observers there came up and was talking to me later, and she was concerned about some of these events being not overtaken, but having a voice, um, that might be disruptive. And I'm wondering if, um, and I know we've got some money for public safety, and, but I always thought public safety was, you know, crowd control, traffic control. And I'm wondering, are people talking about that and, and making plans for, for anything like that?
At all. I know, I know it was a big deal in 75 when the president was here.
Yep.
And, uh, so, but it has not come up as a topic of discussion at the, at the commission.
It is something we're talking about.
Are you?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Especially in terms of reviewing presentations in advance, and so there'd be no surprises, and also, uh, trying to eliminate unnecessary duplication of, you know, when you have a number of dignitaries speaking at an event, uh, they write their speeches in advance, and they tend to like, say all the same thing, you know, over and over again, which isn't that entertaining. Uh, we were asked for a copy of that slide deck from, uh, Representative Cataldo's office, and I think that is in process, but I'd be happy to have a copy, uh, sent to you for the commission.
I can reach out to Jennifer directly. I just want to make sure I have permission from the town that I could share it with the commission.
It's open, isn't it, wasn't it in our packet? So it's public record. It was in our packet.
Very good. It was a great presentation. Henry gave some introductory remarks, and then Jennifer sort of knocked him over with.
The, um, the only thing that I wanted to do before that it got distributed was to make sure that it had a copyright notice on it and that the trademark was also noted appropriately.
Okay.
Okay.
So I didn't hear a mention of the 500,000 for public safety. Was that not routed through the commit, state commission? No, um, because I believe that there is some ramp. And the other thing that I was surprised about when Senator Barrett was here speaking with us and telling us about the $2 million allocation, is that he, his expectation was that the professional that would be hired would spend most of the money trying to fundraise, in other words, to take it up to the next level. Um, and I, I, I was surprised because I thought, oh, well, $2 million, we'll, you know, use it maybe in part to do that, but I would imagine we would also have other material, uh, actions that we want to take here, uh, you know, among the towns to, to get some stuff done. And so I, I was a little taken aback by that.
Well, he just talked about that before. We've got some very large, very prominent corporations that are headquartered here in Boston who have, who have strong philanthropic, philanthropic, arms, and I think it would be a perfectly proper thing for somebody to ask them to contribute to these activities.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But it doesn't cost $2 million to ask. That's, that's what I'm curious about. Okay.
Well, you're likely to get, you're likely to raise $1 million if you spend $2 million.
Maybe, at least. Um, so another question I'd have is, do you have any purview into the, kind of the status of, of the funding, for example, that Lexington is getting? Because, I mean, we have now agreed to spend a half million dollars approximately next year. It depends on what the needs are, but that, um, I don't, I don't know what they're doing yet.
I don't know either. They, they too got some money that was done by, uh, Representative Cataldo and Sokolo.
Yeah.
And they also got money from, uh, from the work of Senator Barrett. The year before, I believe, uh, Representative Sokolo was able to secure, I think it was $50,000 for, uh, Lexington.
Okay.
And there wasn't, that I know of anyway, or representative was Tammy Govea, then I don't.
I don't think we got anything, no.
Was able to, was able to do that. And I note that in the room is the superintendent of the National Park, and, uh, I know that they have a lot of, uh, involvement in security issues generally, so you might want to raise that issue with her if she's.
Yeah.
Going to be speaking to you.
Okay.
Were you asking if Lexington was using their own town funds?
Yeah, they were, you know, for example, we're allocating some ARPA funds, but I don't know what, you know, town meeting's going on right now.
Right.
I don't.
I didn't see anything.
There is a warrant.
I didn't see anything.
For allocation of one in Lexington. Uh, there was one in ours, and I understand that it was.
We were using the ARPA funds instead.
Carrie, you might know, do you know?
I don't, but I'm happy to reach out to the town manager and ask him.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I, I don't know about other towns. I mean, that, those would be the, of course, the two biggest you would expect, though. Who knows? Arlington. Who knows? Arlington had a big role to play on the day.
Go online and you just Google 250th Celebration, Massachusetts. You get a lot of towns who have put together, acted, put together a committee. There's sort of a lot of towns that are putting together committees to sort of coordinate, not to the extent that I think we or Lexington have. But, you know, they're getting organized to kind of deal with the celebration. So I'm, I'm encouraged by that.
Well, it is a regional event. That's one of the things that I was hoping for is to kind of get more of a regional approach. But it doesn't sound like the state commission is really, like you said, taking a leadership role.
Well, I think, I don't think they're driving it. I think the various towns are going to drive it. But I'm glad to see underrepresented people get involved in this. I'm glad to see us involving other towns and other communities and, and activities. I think that's great. But when the day shows up, we know where the large population of visitors is going to be. And that's going to be here in our neighboring town of, towns of Lincoln and Lexington. So, you know, I hope there's a great deal of celebration going on, but there's going to be a a density of it here in our, in our town.
Well, maybe we should establish committees of correspondence.
I, I think I have, I have some ideas about how we can make this work with the state.
I'd be happy to hear them.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Lawson? All right then, we'll move. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
We'll now move to the superintendent of the park. Thank you for coming.
Evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Simone Montleone, Superintendent for Minna Man National Historical Park, 174 Liberty Street.
All right.
So thank you for inviting me back to give an update on our Great American Outdoors Act project. If you recall, we were recipients of FY 22, just approximately $27 million for the park. So the latest to share with you since I was here last. The first phase was contracted out in September to Classic Site Solutions. They will be focusing on the structures and buildings portion of the project. That work is started on ground with the Stow House currently under construction. And that contract was awarded for just over $14 million. So we have just awarded Phase Two, which is focusing on the trails. That was awarded in March. And that will be focusing on the trails at both Battle Road and the North Bridge Unit, which I know is of particular interest to the Select Board. That was awarded to Edward Page Corporation, which is here in Massachusetts for $5.8 million. In order to prepare for the trail work at the North Bridge Unit. PAL, which is the Public Archaeological Lab, has been working with us to do some preliminary testing of the North Bridge area. So we were in coordination with the town to share the research design and the not quite the results yet. We should be having those soon from the archaeological testing. And that's going to help guide us in finalizing plans, which will then be presented formally to the town. At this point, we've had the conceptual plans shared with the town for the North Bridge Unit area. But the contractor on board now will be preparing revised drawings with some additional information. Again, sort of based on some of the archaeological testing. And those will be submitted to the Natural Resources Commission and the other commissions as warranted in order to get review and approval.
Right. I think ultimately we have to approve the works.
Correct. So.
In fact, I think the idea was that we would be doing that tonight back when we originally scheduled. But, you know, things don't always work out like that.
Yes, things taking a little bit longer from the contracting perspective than we had anticipated. So even though the contract has been awarded, they haven't finished their Division One submittals to us yet, which would include a schedule, which I know is of particular interest to the community as well. We should be getting those relatively soon. The goal is that we would have our revised drawings ready for submission to the town. Hopefully within the next couple of months, because we do want to start on the ground work this summer into the fall. The goal is to have the trail work completed by fall of '24. So we have, that's ticking. Yes. So we're, we're looking to, to move now that the contractor is on board.
Yeah. So there's going to be lots of activity over there in the next year, too.
Yes. Yes. In addition, I did also want to just highlight that we are preparing our contract requests for proposals for the following phase, which will be focused on the landscape work, which would include some of the landscaping within the North Bridge Unit. We're hoping to get that contract out within the next, or at least the request for proposals within the next two months. With the, again, the goal that we would award before the end of our fiscal year, which is September of '23. And then that work would come in essentially in tandem with the trail work, with some of it be completing a little later. And some post anniversary, depending on specific types of tree work that might need to be done in terms of plantings. So the signage work is continuing in terms of, we've been coordinating with the town in particular for one, a couple of signs that are within the immediate right of way. So we are working with DPW on that as well as the Historic Commission. And then the much larger signage package, though, won't be coming until a little bit later this year. So and then we will come back to the town for that as well.
So it sounds like other than new plantings, that your hope is to complete the work before the anniversary.
Correct. The goal is to have majority of the work done. Some of the signage will come in after the anniversary. That's why we're kind of splitting the signage into two groups. So the most important signs will be put in before the anniversary because we're replacing over 300 signs.
Wow.
So just to get through design approvals, fabrication, installation, that would be a pretty big lift by April of 2025. So we're focusing on some key signs, including the gateway sign that would be at the east end of the park. And then the, sort of the remainder of the bulk of the signs would come in right after the anniversary.
A sign a day keeps the deadline away. So.
Put that in a minute.
Any questions?
I have a quick question. That's, that's a lot of projects you have going there. So the first contract that you awarded, the 14 million that looks at buildings and facilities, right? You're going to be updating some of the homes there, is that?
Correct.
And then you're going to be leasing them out. Is that correct?
Okay. So part of the project will include rehabilitating a handful of those residential buildings that have been empty for, for quite some time. So we'll be moving those into our residential leasing program. So we currently lease out four buildings, including the Gowing Clark House and the Burke House, which is right across from Miriam's Corner.
And how many will you be leasing out once this project?
So the goal would be nine total. And we'll also be looking to, we have an agricultural program, so we permit with farmers to work the land. So part of the rehabilitation will include Cardi Barn. So we are considering potentially moving that into our agricultural program.
Other questions? Cause I have, I'm curious about the trail works. Do you anticipate closures, trail closures during that time?
Yes. So part of the trail work includes replacement of all the boardwalks. So from a safety perspective, we're going to have to close off sections of the trail as that work is being done. So that's why the, the schedule right now is critical because we don't want to do a wholesale trail closure. We're probably going to do sort of closure by section so that way we can still have some access for the public. So communication will be key for us as we get that more refined in terms of when that will happen. You know, it's, it's difficult. We can't really do reroutes because either that ends up putting people on Route 2A, which we definitely don't want to do, or in more sensitive natural resources and
Process right there.
So, but the goal is to try to minimize the closures as much as possible in the length of time. But the boardwalks would be the most challenging in terms of replacement. So, but we'll be keeping the select board as well as the communities abreast of those closures through a variety of different communication means.
And then you mentioned that you have conceptual drawings. So the old North Bridge area.
Correct.
So could you just conceptually describe?
Sure. Sure. So in the North Bridge Unit on the trail, there's a couple of different areas that have just historically had issues with ponding in terms of where it gets very, very muddy. So when the trail was last rehabilitated, I guess about 20 years ago now. They had introduced a drainage system which hasn't really worked. So part of the proposal is to make some refinements to some of the drainage strategies there, but recognizing that there's some sensitivities too. So the, the drawings we had initially submitted to the town were in-house designs by our HACE team. That's the Historic Architecture Conservation Engineering Group for the National Park Service. So with the contractor on board now, we have them sort of taking a look at what we were proposing to see if there should be any refinements to that proposal. And then that's what we would be coming to the Natural Resources Commission with and others for approval.
Also, I'm just curious that the town owns the site, the ground there. Who owns the bridge?
So in my understanding and reading the agreement, the town owns the bridge as well.
We own the bridge.
That is my understanding.
And do you have a sense of when the, the bridge was rebuilt not all that long ago? I assume it has quite a bit of life ahead of it.
So this year actually is its cycle to have it reviewed from an engineering perspective. So our anticipation is that it's in very good shape. So we're, we're not expecting a bad report from the engineers. But obviously, if, if there is an issue, we would be addressing that and coming to the, the select board to discuss.
You might like replace some boards, for example, or?
Right, right. If, if those are needed. I mean, it's in, it's in very good shape right now. The abutments are in good shape. We, we haven't had any issues. So, but that's part of the, the engineering coming in to, to do the assessment, which again, it's on sort of a cycle to making sure that there's no issues.
Right. But if like Concord were to issue a non-fungible token or an NFT for little fractured pieces of any board that was taken off the bridge, is you see what I mean? It could be a money-making venture for.
Oh, yes, like, like pieces of the true cross.
Exactly. It's a tried and true strategy for revenue.
And, and they do that for, for the flags that they fly over the House of Representatives. They run them up and down the flagpole 100 times a day and then say this is a flag that flew over the state.
There you go.
We gotta get on board. I tell you, we gotta.
A way to fund. Does this mean if we own the bridge that the town is responsible for maintaining it?
Yeah, that's 1963 agreement is that the town retains ownership, but the National Park Service essentially takes over management and care. So that is all the responsibility of us.
Control. But that does mean, is it, I mean, so it mean, if you do remove pieces of that bridge, does the town then own those pieces?
Technically.
That was, I think that was.
I'm sure it's a.
Maybe we can negotiate that.
We'll, we'll talk about it.
Yes.
Anyway, I'm sorry. It sounds like a flip idea.
Especially if the state isn't giving us any money, we might have to sell pieces of the North Bridge.
All right. So I, not that we're going to dismantle it like the British did. But, okay, so any other questions?
No.
All right. Well, thanks so much for coming in and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
And so now we'll move.
I should mention that Simone has been very active in attending our executive committee meetings. Has been a regular participant working with us on the plans.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Well, and in fact, I think this is as much your event as any single person's. I mean, if you think about the territory that you cover, the, you know, just the nature of it being federal. Ultimately, the founding of the nation, all these things, it seems like we should be listening to you as far as this event's concerned.
Well, we like to look at it as a truly comprehensive overarching community, series of communities. So not just the fact that the National Park connects the three towns and the significant battlefield, but it really is all of us. So.
But you've been very much focused on upgrading the grounds, but what about programming for the 250th? I mean, do you have a budget and programming established?
So there's not a dedicated line item for programming. It's something that we will absorb within our, our annual operating budget.
It won't be huge then.
Well, we're looking with partners, including the, the town of Concord on, on doing co-sponsored events and different programs. So we're also looking to collaborate with the other Massachusetts parks. For example, the National Parks of Boston, Longfellow, Adams. So there are other park sites too where we're looking to do cross-programming. So it helps to increase the outreach to visitors as well as the fact that all of these sites are connected through the story for the American Revolution. So there's a variety of different strategies we're taking to offset the fact that there's not a specific line item in a budget for, for the 250th for us.
Okay.
All right. I have a quick question. Did you mind? When you talk about, and both, Mike, you talked about the state wants to represent people that have been underrepresented in previous celebrations. Does that mean they want them to participate or are we also telling their story? Is, you see how they're, they're slightly different? So which is?
I think it's a combination of all of it. And it's not just us telling their story, but giving space for them to tell their stories.
Okay.
So I think, I think all the communities are looking to do that, at least in the conversations that we have been having. And the other park service sites are doing that as well. And that's really through engagement and partnerships that we're able to do that.
Great.
And now we'll move to a superintendent that is just down the street from the other superintendent.
Right.
Amazing.
It's all connected.
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dawson.
I know that our Mr. Ludu, I believe, was.
Yes. So I see him on. You know, he's on vacation this week.
No, I think.
Isn't he?
He's, he's not.
He's not online.
He's not on vacation this week.
Oh, he is not. Terry is. Oh, okay.
I know that on our agenda, it said 7:30.
Oh, so we're just.
Do you want to move to something else?
Well, this isn't.
He'll be here in five minutes.
Okay.
If you want to.
Well, we could. Yeah, we could do that very easily and we could also do nominations. Oh, there are no nominations and there are no appointments? Oh, there are some appointments. Okay. So first point of business there, May meeting. So we, our schedule went up through town meeting. But clearly we need to have a meeting scheduled after town meeting for people to get together. And then at that point, you can kind of create a schedule. But then as I looked, it also only makes sense to do a, a meeting on the May 22nd as well. So I would just suggest that we schedule May 8th and May 22nd as the subsequent select board meetings that I will not be attending, but that.
I won't be here on the 8th.
The board would be. And typically, you know, at that first meeting, the other thing that we need to do and that we can do at the next meeting is collectively, because there, there won't be a chair, a chair would be elected on, in that first meeting, that the, to establish an agenda so that an agenda can be posted ahead of the meeting. Right?
So who would post the agenda for the May if?
Well, that's what I mean. I think if we as a board, and I'll sit out in the discussion. But if you discuss, and the, usually the first meeting after town meeting is very well set. You choose officers, you talk about liaison assignments and you talk about goals, right? So it's, it's usually pretty rote. It's not that controversial. Plus there of course will be items that just show up that need to be done, you know, appointments and so on. So anyway, be prepared. Next meeting, we could have that discussion so that a agenda can be posted for that May 8th meeting. That's all.
Well, I can't be here on the 8th.
At all?
No.
Okay. Well.
So could we move it to?
It could be the 15th.
What do you think, Henry? Are you okay with moving it to the 15th?
I mean, we will have just finished town meeting. So, you know.
You know, I'm around. I don't go anyplace.
So Linda, do you have any views on meeting dates in May? Linda, do you have any views on meeting dates in May?
I, I think May 15th would work. The other agenda item that will need to be included is a follow-up to the town meeting in terms of whether we need to contact the legislature, do whatever.
Oh, yes. Yep. Okay. Well, then let's, why don't we just go ahead and set that then, May, May 15th? We don't have to set the May 22nd date. You could get together then, but realizing that the two weeks later is Memorial Day, you're not going to meet then.
You're right.
Then you're most likely to want to meet the 15th and 22nd. I'm just guessing.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to do nominations?
There are none.
No, there are appointments. Excuse me, appointments.
Shall I?
Yes, go ahead.
Move to appoint Brian Krauts of 49 Indian Pipeline for a term to expire May 31st, 2026 to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee.
Second.
Uh, well, we can keep going.
Okay.
They're nominating.
Yeah, you can just, and you can just instead of move the second one, you can say, and.
And to appoint Bernice Fussek of 115 Stowe Street to Peter Bulkley Terrace for a term as the tenant member from May 1st, 2023 to May 31st, 2028 to the Concord Housing Authority and to appoint Robert Monroe of 1400 Lowell Road for a second term from May 1, 2023 to May 31, 2026 to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Okay. Thank you. And I see Mr. Ladoo is here.
Sorry, I, I thought we were meeting at 7:30.
Well, yeah, we, they're kind of approximate times.
Well, because my wife's not here tonight. Not for the rest.
The meeting is being recorded.
Pay more later, I'm sure.
Okay. So here we are to talk about the Minuteman Tech update. I think I provided a few suggested topics. So one of them, well, go ahead and, and if you would like to make some initial remarks and then we'll get into some.
Q and A.
Sure.
And I just wanted to say good evening and thank you so much for having us. I'm Kathleen Dawson. I'm the new superintendent at Minuteman. And as you know, Mr. Ladoo, he represents Concord and he, he's a very strong advocate of the town. And so I know that he's here to present with us. And I just wanted to also let you know that our business manager, Ms. Nikki Andre, is also available in case that there are some questions that may come up. But we're here to just give some, you know, more context and some follow-up based on our presentation to the Finance Committee at Concord. We also did meet with town managers and administrators as well as members of FinCom and Select Board who are available to attend a presentation that Minuteman School Committee and our team presented on potential possibilities if the towns were interested in considering a new member town joining the district. So I, I believe there were a couple of questions about that and there were some questions about a future enrollment at Concord. So Mr. Ladoo, was there anything you wanted to say?
No, I, I just, as, as Dr. Dawson has pointed out, we did, we did have a couple informational meetings. We, we have a, a subcommittee that's, that looking at the possibility of, of adding new members to the district. And we did have, as Dr. Dawson pointed out, a couple of meetings. Terry did attend that, the one with, for Select Board and FinCom members. And I, I know she told me she had intended to report at the last Select Board meeting, but I guess you guys ran.
We ran real late.
So she didn't do that. So I, I think it's important for us to kind of let you know where we're at with that. We've had, I believe, four towns that have indicated they'd like to join the district, three of which are towns that pulled out of the district. And then Watertown, who has historically been tuitioning students to Minuteman. So I'll let Dr. Dawson talk about, about our subcommittee. He's been looking at scenarios, looking at kind of buy-in in terms of capital, if, if we were to have member towns or have new members for towns. And, and also it, it, if we were to add new members, it would take, you know, or all nine towns, town meetings of the current district would have to approve. So one town voting no, and, and that would not happen. But we had some interesting comments, particularly around.
They added a member. He says like NATO. And I said, well, they added a member.
It took a while.
But we, we had some interesting comments, particularly from some members. I know one member from the Act and Finance Committee who talked about, well, you know, you had these towns had pulled out and, you know, it wasn't sitting well with him of why we would take them back. I think, you know, they probably acted too hastily and now they have kids that want to come. And, you know, as we've talked before, we don't have a lot of, a lot of space for, for new students outside of the district. So I'll turn it over to Dr.
And as you can imagine, and some of you probably may recall at the time of conversation and build, wanting to build a new building and then realizing the cost of building a new building. And all towns, as it is their fiscal responsibility to take a look at that and say, what are the ramifications and impact? And when you think about, you know, at that time, it's, it was, it's a different time than it is now. And some of those towns did have smaller numbers of students attending. And so when they were comparing to the number of students attending, you know, comparing that to the cost that they would have to pick up in helping to build a new school, I'm sure that, you know, they made the best fiscal response decision at that time. Unfortunately, what's happened since then is that yes, we have a brand new building and it's beautiful. But internationally and very much so on a national level, economically, what's happening is that our industry partners are saying, look, we do not have a pipeline of future employees. And so they're very desperate to finding out the most efficient and effective way of educating their future employees. Career tech education and our regional districts provide that solution, right? Not all degrees, I mean, not all programs require a four-year degree to be, enter the workforce. At Minuteman, our students have the opportunity, should they not want to go directly into college, to major in a program of study that will allow them to gain a certain level of expertise, a certain number of credit, credits, but also industry-recognized credentials that will enable them and qualify them to be quite competitive in entering the workforce immediately upon graduation without having to go to post-secondary. Now, we always prepare them for post-secondary, but that is our responsibility. Because at some point, we do hope that they see that this is a journey of on-ramping onto, you know, of work, but then also at times off-ramping to further their education or doing both at the same time, as we know that this is a continuous learning, you know, thing that we do, right? As we continue to grow in our careers. So our towns that did leave us are now realizing they have no option for their students to gain career tech education. So that's, you know, part of the reason why they are looking to see what their options are in doing so. But, you know, when Minuteman and the school committee and the towns at that time were deciding what we needed to do, we knew we needed a new building. And what was happening as far as enrollment was that almost 50% of enrollment were coming from out-of-district towns. And so, you know, they said, if we build a new building, they'll come, and they did. And one of the things that are happened was that they came a lot sooner than, and quicker than expected. And that is why a lot of our current member towns are experiencing the, the rapid increase in your assessments, because what we thought would be more gradual is happening more immediate. And so when you take a look at increasing enrollment, decreasing in out-of-district student membership, our towns are having to pick up that loss that we were gaining from out-of-district town students, because they were helping to offset some of the costs. But as that number is decreasing, so is that income. So it were, it's about $2 million in decrease that we're no longer receiving. That's heavy, right? And so our towns are having to pick that up. And then at the same time, our towns and for Concord, what's happening is we would have an average of, say you would have 20, no, I'm sorry, that's the numbers. I know, I have to take my glasses off to be able to see. Your current, like four years ago, only five students, you had five students, you have five current seniors. We have five current juniors, eight sophomores, and then all of a sudden you have 18 freshmen. So when you're doing the four-year rolling average, you've got two extremes now, right? So we still have some low numbers that are going to drop, but as higher number of students come in, and I believe we have for the, let's see, as of March 20th, March 27th, Concord's slot allocation was 15. There were 23 qualified applicants and 22 were offered admission and 15 students have accepted with seven students having declined. So again, I'm sorry?
That worked out well.
Right. So you're going to have another good number of, of students. And so when you take a look at, you know, when you were asking about projected enrollment and increase, it is not a linear, simple equation, right? There are these complicated variables that sometimes we don't even know until the year of. So it's, it makes it difficult for us to project long-term. But Ms. Andre did do a projection for next year. So if you took a look at, if you were to anticipate, because of grade 11 and 12, only having five students each year, and then what it's looking like is that Concord will see a steeper increase for at least two more years until that levels out, potentially three years as grade 10 only has eight students. So two to three years, once it starts to level out. So if we use 15 as a placeholder for next year, then you have the 15 plus 18 plus eight plus five, 46 students for FY '25 budget. And so the four-year rolling average would increase from 119 divided by four, 29.75 to 140 divided by four, which equals 35 students. And that would be an increase in a four-year rolling average, about five and a quarter students, quarter students, but which would be about 17.6% increase.
But isn't it more likely that if they, if you have 18 freshmen, that, that, that the number from next year is going to be closer to that than to the average? Because the reason that they've applied, those eight reasons will, you know, will still pertain, right? And so it's more, more likely that you will continue to have numbers somewhat like the 18 than going back to the four or five.
Yes. And I think you're absolutely right. This number could go up, right? And we, but we use the 15 number because we know that 15 students have accepted as of right now for next year. So we did go with that number. And as you know, we allocate a certain number of seats per district based upon the member share. And we did take a look at, this is our first year that all of our freshmen came from our member towns. That's a first year. And it's thought it to be the same for next year.
Is that because you had no spaces left for out-of-district students?
We now have, have no spaces left for out of town because our member towns have taken up all the seats. The school was designed and built for 628 at 85% capacity. And that's the, the percent and capacity that the Massachusetts School Building Association calculates. So if you were to extrapolate that out, what would be our 100% capacity and that's 720 students. 720 students with four grades, if you divide that equally, you're looking at 180 students per class. So we do have some numbers a little bit on the lower end. We have a class that's a little bit higher. So we're starting to level that out. We do accept a few more. And this year we started with that acceptance of 189 because historically what we found was that there's about 5% attrition rate. So we did a little bit higher. And that's why when you say that if Concord was allocated, you know, a certain number of seats, why we offer more? Because again, like you see, seven has, have already declined.
If, if you're at capacity now at 100% capacity is what I'm hearing, right? Then how would, why would you entertain new towns?
So the way, the way that we would consider a new town, first and foremost, I do want to reiterate that we would never do anything that is going to jeopardize the integrity of what Minuteman has to offer. Because if students come to Minuteman and they're not getting what they want, at least the, as far as programs, at least one of the top three choices, then if they're not going to get that, then they're not going to come, right? So we did take a look at if we increased enrollment, would that jeopardize? Now, if we were to bring in a member town, we would do so because what we would be looking to do is an increase in overall enrollment numbers. Current building, 720. We do have another East Building. When you're first driving up to the school, right at the, at the base before, you see all of the athletic facilities, there's a road that goes off.
Yep.
That's the East Campus, right? And it had been used previously by different organizations for various different programs. Currently it sits vacant, but it was very important when it allowed us to do what we needed to do for spacing during the pandemic. So now we're looking at how can we use that space? It's a building that if we were to just renovate it, do the minimum renovations as is, we could get in at least four classrooms. And if you average out about 20 students per class, that's another 80 students. So adding that to the 720, we would have a capacity of 800. By increasing the enrollment capacity, that would allow us to add another member town without taking away seat opportunities for the remaining nine towns.
Would, would it be more advantageous to have their students come as out-of-district, paying out-of-district tuition rather than making them a member?
I would say no, it caught, they pay less.
Because we, we were able to get, I guess it was legislation to charge a capital fee to the, to out-of-district students, but what, what we're allowed to charge is, is, is lower than what we should charge. And also the tuition is set by the state and that does not cover costs necessarily. So it, it's not a real winner to bring in out-of-districts.
And, and then you have the capital cost of the renovation of the space.
Right, right, right. And that's something we're, we're, we're looking at to do without going back to the towns for more money. How, how could you do it? How could we do it? Well, you know, we have, we have a stabilization fund. We'd probably have some of the kids do some of the. I was gonna say the kids, yeah, they're, they're working.
But the stabilization fund was funded by current members.
Yes.
So we'd be paying now for what we paid, we'd be funding now what we paid earlier.
And one of the strategies, well, and we would try not to.
We already paid.
We already paid.
Right. We would try not to tap into that, that'd be our last resort. What we're looking to do in one of the strategies that we shared in the finance, the Finance Committee is strategic partnership, doing a, a private-public partnership where we would find partners that would be willing to invest in the cost to either renovate the current building or if we did knock it down and build a brand-new building, we could also increase the footprint and allow for slightly more than four classrooms and 80 students. We don't, we don't want to get too big because we don't want to get so big that we take away from what makes Minuteman so special. But if there's an opportunity to make a little bit bigger for other types of things by like creating more of an animal science clinic type of environment or for health assisting type of, and then really to take a look, creating an innovation center there. We would want strategic partners to pay for that. And in return, they could lease some of that space to, for their own gain until they have their return on investment. So those are, we do have special legislation that does allow for Minuteman to go into long-term lease agreements with potential partners that would allow us to look at those types of partnerships.
So what you're saying really is it would enable you to make the offerings, the subject matter offerings more diverse. So you could offer specialties that you can't offer now. Is that right?
I would.
Because if you're going to be able to use private partnership, but private, public-private partnerships to like sponsor programs, that's something you could do now without having, increasing your, your space or your capital cost.
So what I would say is what we can do now is we have 19 career pathway programs. Part of the plan is to review all of them to ensure that we are as relevant and connected to the industry needs, right? So some of the programs may require a shift in some of the certifications or the way we teach what we teach. So for instance, we may include. So for instance, we may include in the plans to take a look at how are we including more of the machine learning, the artificial intelligence, the augmented and virtual and mixed reality? How are we using those technologies to teach what we teach? But also how are we teaching our students to be able to program and design for those types of industries where they're so short of that, those capabilities? So I don't want to say it's to start like brand-new programs, but to make sure that what we are offering is as relevant and up-to-date with industry standards and practices. I mentioned animal science in the sense that the initial, there was some conversation about a private-public partnership that was going to actually take a part of, a portion of that east campus and renovate and actually build their clinic on that site. Unfortunately, it didn't go through, but it's those types of partnerships that they would have come in, built their clinic. And then it would have, our students, our animal science program would have used that clinic as almost like a teaching clinic. And they could have done some of their clinicals there. So those are still opportunities that we're exploring and seeing how we can maximize our partnership to create space, an opportunity for us, our students to learn in a way that is more current for their times. Taking a look at the metaverse in regard to how do we create a very immersive opportunity for students to be able to learn and be able to do things that they can't do in the, just the regular classroom. So there, there are opportunities for us to, to take a look at that.
I, I think what you're, you do over there is wonderful. I really do, and I certainly wouldn't want to turn any students away. But as far as inviting member towns, are you asking for our opinion now? Or are you just giving us a heads up that you're, you know?
So we've been, we wanted to, you know, the school committee has been very, very forward-thinking and looking ahead to say, you know what? There's this big statewide push to increase career tech ed at all schools, not just our regional CTE school districts. And so, you know, keeping in mind that what will that do for the competition of our programs? Taking a look at that, you know what? We have students, even though they may not be our member town students, they're still students, right? And, and they're all our responsibility. So they not having access, are there ways and, you know, opportunities for Minuteman to be able to continue to provide that access at a larger, you know, to more students? And then just saying, you know, not knowing like, yes, in this moment, things are headed in a positive way. But things shift. So just looking ahead, is this something that we should look at? And we want our towns to be informed of what your options are, what the finances could look like. Should you need to or want to go in that direction about thinking about it? And then it is a long process. So this is not anything that we say, hey, let's go to the towns and go to a, you know, meeting and see what they want to do. It's a process and it's at least a two-year process. So we wanted our towns, all of you to just be informed that this is an option. And like Mr. Ludu said, it will require a unanimous vote. Every town has to agree that this is something you all want to enter into. And I'm always about making sure that you're informed so that you make informed decision.
Well, I think one of the things that showed up last time when towns left was that the OPEB liability, they kind of were able to get out of in effect. And I hope that especially if it's three towns that were formerly members, that they would, you know, inherit that responsibility. And in some sense, they kind of, you know, snuck out of a couple of years of contributions. You know, that's something that's a significant responsibility beyond the capital responsibility. I, I just want to say that that's one of the things that's stuck out for me last time. So I, I hope there is some means to, you know, make true that up as we go forward.
And, and we, we have a, a, a subcommittee that I'm not on, but it's a communication, access and curriculum. Is this C? Do I see the curriculum? No.
Access and admissions.
And admission, yes. So there, there the subcommittee has been charged that looking at whether we want to take on new towns or not. So, you know, we heard, we heard from the, from the town managers and administrators, we heard from some select board members and FinCom members. So they've kind of have to regroup and, and, and think through some things. One of the, one of the things that struck me from, from the meeting a couple of weeks ago was, you know, we were kind of thinking about, I know the CAC was, was thinking about bringing it to a, to a vote a, a year from now and, and, and twenty-four. And I think from the feedback we got from some of our representatives from all of the towns is, you know, what's the rush? And, you know, there really necessarily isn't a rush, you know? And it, it's going to, and it's going to take a lot of education, no matter what we decide to do. But, you know, it, it, it's, the good news is, you know, people want to come to our school. The bad news is, you know.
You don't have any room.
And in all fairness to the, the towns that did inquire, we want to be able to say to them, like, you know, we have presented to our towns and right now we're not ready to proceed, right? Because if we don't give them anything, then it's hard for them to plan. And so as I've been communicating with them, I've been keeping them abreast of here's where we are in the process. And yes, I think that the biggest concern was if we have our member towns have students on the waitlist, what they're not okay with is creating more of a waitlist of our nine member town students to let. So, and we heard that very loud and clear, right? And, but we, at the same time, what we were also hearing from our member towns was, you know what? These assessments and that steep increase, like it's a lot. How are you going to lower them? And, you know, and what our response is, we aren't just arbitrarily increasing them. It's going up because our, you know, student enrollment is going up from your towns. If you want to try to lower it, here is a way, we could let in a member town. Lowering, it's not as, it won't be as much as we think it might be, it'd be more nominal. But then towns do have to weigh that cost. At what cost will you lower your assessment? And by adding our students to them, I mean, like that's, you know, so at least you're making informed decisions and saying, you know what? Yes, we could work to lower, but here's what that cost is. And we're not willing to put that cost because you don't put a cost on our kids' education in that way, right? So I think at least you have the backing, the, the numbers and information so that as you're presenting to, you know, the town members who might be saying, well, no, it's like, well, you know, because it will come at a cost. And what we're finding is that it will be the cost of more of our member town students being on the waitlist than not. Even, you know, and yes, what we're trying to do is saying, okay, how can we try to minimize that by increasing enrollment capacity? But even then it's a small number of seats. And more, what we're finding is that more students and families are interested.
But you can't really rationalize the numbers if so much of your, your income is controlled by the legislature, like what you can charge for tuition and so on. You know, you, you can't say that we're going to increase the cost because we have hi- higher capital cost to provide for additional students. You have to just essentially, your income, your income is a given and that makes it much harder.
Yes.
So I did raise the question of assessments because right now, I mean, you use a moving average approach for assessing the towns. And right now we're actually benefiting significantly. And we will, even in the subsequent year, that while our assessment may go up seventeen percent, let's say estimated, that the number of students that we have enrolled is going up by far more than seventeen percent. That's great right now. In three years, that when this levels off, we're going to see a change. And, and again, will we likely get a allocation of fifteen again next year? Or would it be less?
I'm trying to remember, because there's a formula.
I mean, because at some point, right, we have enough students that are, they're in the school that we probably hit some sort of limit, right?
So each year, the school committee revisits the calculation for seat allocations. So everyone gets a certain percentage. And then based upon the four-year rolling average determines the, the share. So everyone, there's a formula and.
Right, so I mean, I'm just curious, like right now we're forty-six. If you had fifteen a year, we'd get up to sixty potentially. We don't know.
Yeah.
But I wonder if we tap out before we even get to sixty. I wonder if we get, we tap out at fifty or something, I, I just wonder.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts. And like, we had a discussion the other night, like Arlington's building a new high school. So Arlington is, is clearly has the most kids going to Minuteman. Will, will, will the attraction of a new Arlington high school, for example?
Pull away, right, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that's true, there's so many variables.
Yeah, and the, the question is, does our school budget go down if more of our students go to Minuteman?
Well, you know, that's an interesting question, Henry, because, you know, one, one of our other budget drivers is fifty, about fifty percent of, of the students are on some kind of educational plan, a special ed. So special ed's very, very expensive. So depending on, you know, in, in Concord's case, if there are.
It could potentially reduce the load here in town.
You know, I, I did the case, which was the first case where a special needs student was admitted to a voc- vocational school. That was a landmark case. Cool, for Neshobatech.
On the show, but that, alright, yeah.
Okay, any more questions for Superintendent Dawson? Or Mr. Ludu? Okay, thank you very much for the update. All right, that brings us to assigning speakers. So I have, so we, I, I discussed with the moderator the articles that there might be an opportunity for a select board speaker, right? And so let me just share, I didn't get all of my notes in here yet, but I think we can quickly catch up. So here is the list. So Article Five, the classification and compensation plan. So there, I assumed, and here's my rubric.
Yep.
Typically, you would go with the liaison to the committee that's bringing an article forward. If it's some other committee, that would be a default selection. The second factor though is if that liaison was not in the majority or something, or they already have too many articles or something, then you look to someone else. So for classification compensation, Terry was the liaison. I think she's followed it fairly closely. I think that it makes sense for her to get that speaker assignment.
Give them all to her.
Okay, Article Ten is the petition, warrant article for D I Director. We are not sure that that's going to be moved, but if it is moved, and of course, we have not come to a position.
Right.
But I, again, I am the liaison to that commission. I would expect to do the statement on behalf of the board unless I'm, you know, strongly opposed to what the board decides.
Okay.
Because that's the other thing is, yeah, you, you don't really want to be standing up there. You, I mean, technically we should be able to stand up there and speak on behalf of the board, even if we individually weren't in favor. But I think it's more comfortable if you're speaking, you know, for the majority, if you voted with the majority.
Yep.
Okay, the next one is the Concord Public School Budget. I've got a TBD next to that one.
I'll do that.
You want to do it? Because further down, I've got some other assignments. Okay, well, I don't know if Henry, that's another possibility.
For governmental budget?
Yeah, yeah, Cockburn Public School Budget. This is the one that the board, you know, voted. So I'm the school committee liaison, but I was the sort of lone wolf voting
Right.
for the, their request as opposed to the finance committee guideline. So I want to step aside on that one and let somebody else. So Mary and Henry, can you arm wrestle and give me a?
Or Linda?
Or Linda, but, but I wondered, Linda, do you, would you like to sit out giving presentations? I don't know, you know, by May, how you'll be feeling.
So I've been trying to think about this in preparation for tonight. You know, I would like to think that I'm going to be able to do it, but there is some risk that I can't.
Uh huh. Well, I don't know that you, you know, have to feel obliged. I don't want you to feel passed over, but on the other hand, you know, I think we can cover them. There aren't that many.
We could have Linda, if, if she wants, she feels strongly about one with a backup.
Yeah, do you have any that you're passionate about on this? Because that's the other thing is I don't think that you were a liaison on any of the other articles that were moved. Because that, that are before us that we would weigh in on.
Yeah, so, you know, I have CPC and I have all of the housing articles.
Right.
So those would be the likely ones.
But I don't know that, are we going to have a statement on those? That's the question I'd have.
Yeah, because some of them may be on the consent agenda, yeah.
Right.
But even, even the articles that we had on the consent agenda last year, we had, we were either ready for a statement from, as it turns out, Keith on a couple of them. But since the, the housing ones, all the money is being directed to the Affordable Housing Trust, I think it's less appropriate that he be the one speaking to that.
Right, good point.
Okay, well, maybe we want to add a couple to have as backups. So if you're, if you'd like to make a proposal, we can certainly consider that. And, and we do still have time, you know, next time, but it's just that I thought it would be great to give people a chance to draft their statements. It's always great if we could review them as a group. Yeah.
So when would, when would be re- re- reviewing them?
When we really need, oh.
No, to review them next, the statements next week.
Ideally, I'd like to review them April twenty-fourth, that are meeting on April twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Review, we're going to review the statements or we're going to?
Review the drafts?
The drafts, draft statement ideally.
Yeah. I can try and I guess if a week before the twenty-fourth, that I, I feel I won't be ready, I'll have to alert you, Matt.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm sorry, but that's what.
No, no, I think, hey, it's amazing that you're willing to even consider doing it. Okay, and I'm just putting in the sort of shortcut, short. Okay, so do we have a, a winner on the CPS budget? We're going to. I would suggest Henry, because he doesn't have any other articles except for.
Except we haven't gone down the list and I don't want to do so.
All right.
He's got my name next to.
Here, I'll put a question mark. Okay, so now the next one is the landscaping. Now, we don't expect it'll be moved, but it might be moved. If it is moved, I think that, I anticipate that myself as the school committee liaison will be able to speak to that article. Then on behalf of the board, I'm just guessing. We have it deliberate, but I have a hunch. Then Article Twenty-two, Solar Generation Task Force. I have your name, Mary, next.
I know, I know. The last I heard about this is that that article was going to be changed so that rather than asking the select board to impanel a committee, he was going to ask the town to impanel the committee. So that kind of changes it from my point of view. So I'm wondering, and the only role the select board have would be to appoint people. So this town is being asked to approve this committee. The committee is going to report back to the town at a subsequent town meeting.
Right.
So in my opinion, we don't really have a big role.
We might have an opinion about another committee being formed, whether it's formed by the town or by us. I would say, I have an opinion.
Then maybe you should talk to it.
Well.
I'm, okay, my problem with this is that I'm, I really see both sides. So it'd be. I'm, okay, my problem with this is that I'm, I really see both sides. So it'd be hard for me to stand up there.
I see both sides too. I have the same problem.
What about you, Henry?
Are you one sided?
I hope so.
I mean, there's also Terry. She's not in the room tonight. That's always the.
That was a joke. That was a joke.
People is they're not in the room, they get it. Um, so, I mean, we could still leave it, you know, tentative. Let, let me keep going, okay?
Yeah.
Um, Specialized Stretch Energy Code, I believe I can speak to that article.
Absolutely.
And I was also.
I could do leaf flowers.
Of the, you know, and then Mary will do leaf flowers.
Oh, yeah.
And then uh tentatively, I would hope that we get a two minute statement on Article twenty five, even though it will not be moved. So this is the, the two fiftieth.
Hmm.
And Henry, I, I clearly, I would think that you would be the one to speak to that if we have the opportunity to make a brief presentation. And I think that the presentation would simply explain, hey, we're not moving this article. It's not because we're not spending money, but that we found another source and that here's the plan. You know, just as a brief flash and get excited and come on down.
I can, but we're not asking for a vote be available to do it, but do you also want me to seek the?
Well, you could delegate it.
Well, no, the question is, as somebody is going to have to negotiate this with the moderator. As to whether or not we're gonna be even able to make a.
That's right. And I'd be happy to try to negotiate that. It's, it's what I hope, I hope we will be able to give a statement.
Okay.
Um, so.
I'll leave that in your able hands.
All right. So then that brings us back to Article twenty two, back to the solar generation.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay. Um, so then that, I think we've got it. Um.
So. Matt?
Yes.
I just thought of one other thing. Um, in terms of the transfer of funds for Junction Village to the Affordable Housing Trust, the amount that was um funded by the town appropriation at a previous ATM, um, that one probably should be moved by either the um, and not move, but maybe written up by the town finance director at this point, because it was um coming from a town appropriation. Did you, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe it's on the consent calendar, by the way.
Yeah.
Um, so unless someone pulled it off, I.
No. So Matt, I have a clarifying question. When you say we're going to review the statements, do you mean the statements for the table, the handouts, or the statements that we're gonna?
Statements are a little two minute statement.
Okay, we're gonna review. Okay, okay.
And by the way, we get a maximum of three minutes.
Whoa.
Which is pretty expensive. I would hope we could aim for two or less.
No kidding.
Well, it's maximum of two, a three.
I, maximum of three, but I think two or less did you a better answer.
I agree. Yep.
Um. And nothing on the, nothing on Article nine, the town budget. You're not intending to
weigh in?
Speak to that.
Well, I mean, that would be traditional.
I'm just wondering if, if there's any controversy on the, on the floor of town meeting.
Possible.
Oh.
I mean, I think we would do it ad hoc. I would say we would have the moderator announce that we were unanimous in support of the budget.
Hmm.
And that we wouldn't take the time out of the meeting for it. And if there was debate, then, you know, or controversy, then we would step up.
That's a good plan.
All right.
Somebody is gonna uh single out an item, a line item.
That's right, or they'll, yeah.
Or an amount.
They'll talk, they'll say, why is it this percent or things like that, right?
Exactly. Okay.
Okay.
We could talk to that.
Okay.
I think we have a plan. Linda, if you wanted to propose any, anything else that you would prepare as a as a uh, you know, backup, you know, in case we need to speak to it? Like the, you know, the housing or zoning articles or something like that.
Yeah, so um I, I'm assuming you've got me down for the C, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'm assuming you've got me down for the CPC statement, right?
No, actually, that's, we traditionally do make a statement for the CPC.
We do. It's on the consent calendar, isn't it?
No, the CPC is not, not on the consent calendar. So why don't we ask if we could do that, make a statement on the CPC and we'll put Linda's name.
I, I know I did last year.
And if we don't, yeah, and if, and if uh basically you're not able, we just won't have a statement on it. So that's Article twenty six.
Or you, or, or you could read it in place of me or something.
Could read it. Yeah, sure. Okay. I think that that does it.
Yep.
Um, food trucks. I don't think that we, I mean.
We voted on food.
We voted on it, but I don't think that, I didn't sense that the uh select board had any unique point of view on it. I think that, again, it's a case where the moderator would announce the vote that the select board did and then proceed. I don't know that we would proactively make a statement.
I want to um make the point that I think that we should be very clear that the way they set the meeting up is that we sit together at a table.
We do.
Um.
We're in session.
We're in session at it, but together at a table. So if we have to, and we notice it for our meeting, so if we have any discussion, we can.
And we can ask to be recognized and, and step right up. Yep.
But um, let's think again about Article thirty four, the food trucks. You don't think we had a, you, you don't think we had brought any new perspectives to that?
Well, sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't meaning to insult the select board by saying that, but.
The only, the only comment I think that's that was made on that uh was your comment about parking one in your driveway. And mine that I did not want this select board to have to
To do the.
permits.
Right.
For, for them being in the public way.
Right.
And I issued a statement that I thought that bringing in competition was actually a good economic policy. And I also thought, well, and that we supported it. And I also talked about the fact that when Cafe Nero came in, we were all worried about competition. And in fact, everyone is thriving. So maybe is that no different than what you heard other people say?
I think, I think.
I thought that the economic, well, well, that, that was a unique angle. I mean, do you want to speak on it?
Do we want to wait and see what the actual motion is? Because actually, some of these cases, how much, how, whether, whether.
Is amended.
Is, is, may, may depend on what the motion is.
Right. Let's, let's leave it for now.
So they're amending it, you're saying? Do you know that for sure?
That for a fact.
They should.
They should, but.
Okay, I thought, so we're going to report on town meeting on that one? Is that what we decided?
Uh, no.
Report a town meeting? Yeah, no, it says report a town.
A report at town.
We didn't, we didn't vote because we didn't know if they were amending it. And then I remembered, I remembered I asked, is anybody?
Can't make a statement on an article that we haven't, I mean, yeah, we can't compose the statement yet. So, I mean, that's also true of the task force, right? We're waiting to hear about that.
Who's our liaison to the planning? Who's our?
I, I am Linda.
Yeah, I'm this.
Linda, do you know if they're um?
Tomorrow night.
Okay, and so you will know then if they're going to propose an amendment.
Yep, there's more discussion tomorrow night.
I think that tentatively, it would be Linda.
Yeah.
The food truck?
Yeah. Well, cause she's the liaison. It's sort of hers to, hers to give away.
No, I wasn't giving it to, I was just saying, Linda, do you know if they're going to amend it?
Yeah, I don't know. There's, there's some ongoing discussion on a couple of them tomorrow night that are from the planning board.
Okay, I don't know if she wants to.
Well, I think we should leave it open.
Okay.
I think we should just put a TBD.
Okay.
And just see what we've got. So everybody all right?
No, I have a couple more comments if I may. Um, when I was referring to all of the articles that speak to transferring JV money to the Affordable Housing Trust, I recognize that some of those are slated for the consent agenda, but I think we still need a select board paragraph about each one. Or about the combination of ones that transfer all the money.
You mean a paragraph meaning that we read aloud at the, at the meeting?
That we, well, or that we have ready. Right? Because.
This is gonna be.
What if it comes off the consent agenda? Who's going to be prepared to make a statement if we don't have a paragraph already?
Well, I, I don't know. I would, I would be fine with making an ad hoc statement.
Okay. Okay.
Personally.
Yeah, okay.
It got, well, not the consent agenda, uh, consent calendar, I'd be surprised.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, so then my other comment I'd like to make is that, is there a way that we somehow um get sent individually um, a complete list of the articles and who's assigned as one document? And a complete list of, um. Oh, I think it showed.
Yeah, I was gonna show you that there is this other document um, here that.
That's, that's the one I'm referring to.
Shannon's been keeping track of, and you see the speaker assignment is this column on the right. So we'll be, Shannon will be filling that in. So we will have one document that has it all.
Okay, and if, it, rather than just being in the packet, if that could be sent individually, uh, uh, vis- vis a email attachment would be helpful.
Okay. Even though it'll be kind of a living document, but as, as we get close to town meeting, we.
Yeah, I, I understand. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then I should also mention that I heard after our last meeting, after we deliberated on the uh, Article thirty seven, I believe it was, that uh, that, that the motion is significantly changed that, that's being proposed. So we probably should reconsider that article at you know, when we meet right before town meeting.
Can we have Sven come here?
We can though. I mean, the, right on the face of it, you just look at the changed language, it's pretty clear.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, yeah, I, I can, I can forward that
Great.
To the board, but I was surprised um that, yeah, there were significant changes.
When, when, there's a deadline for the motions to go to the moderator.
Next week or the end of this week.
Well, so are we gonna?
It was Friday.
The motion.
It was like, it was last Friday.
Okay, well, I know that they, they had this changed motion already.
Well, so wouldn't it be a good idea for us to have the motions?
It would be a great idea for us to have the motions if, if they've been submitted. Yeah.
Uh, so we haven't had the, we haven't had the review meeting yet.
Okay.
We, we don't circulate those until they've been reviewed in our town council moderator. Um, that meeting is sometime this week.
This week.
Okay, so anyway, once they're.
It's Thursday.
They'll be published, right?
Um.
Or at least you can.
They'll, they'll, they'll be circulated. So that meeting is the end of the day on Thursday.
Okay.
The Public Works Commission is taking up um the, the gas blowers at their meeting on Wednesday too. So that might be a conversation to listen into.
Okay, I'll go, I'll be there.
Four o'clock on Wednesday.
Do we need a motion?
We do not need a motion. I think I'm signing speakers.
Okay, okay.
I don't think we need a motion.
We don't need, okay.
Okay, um, I think that takes us now to our correspondence. Don't believe we have any this week, right? Or was there something in our packet? Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the nun here. It's the wrong nun. There's no motion, but there is correspondence. Sorry. Yes, I, um, yeah, there are two pieces of correspondence. I want to acknowledge one. Uh, they're actually both about the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. Um, and who, their, their standards for who belongs in the parade, uh, from Ellen Quackenbush and Janet Rothrock.
Why is the PCC um charged in our packet?
Linda asked me to.
Got it. Okay, for just.
With those pieces of correspondence.
Oh, I see. Okay. And the minutes. Got it. Okay.
All right, um. So now we're ready for liaison reports and we're eight fifteen. There's ample time for a liaison report if you'd like to make one.
Well, I would mention two things. One is the, I want to um remind people about the, the first event of sponsored by the two hundred and fiftieth uh Executive Committee, which is the uh commemoration of Ellen Garrison, which is the event that's taking place on Friday, uh, at which we are presenting a proclamation. And um uh, that's taking place in Holy Family and the Townhouse, and I believe it starts at six o'clock. Um, and also mention that we are doing a walkthrough, uh, the Public Ceremonies Committee is doing a walkthrough with the National Park on Wednesday of the uh, what's the uh the activities that will take place at the North Bridge um on Wednesday afternoon. Um, and that's about really all I have to, to report on that.
Okay. Uh, Linda, did you have any liaison reports?
Well, I, I did get to the um Concord Housing Authority meeting and um it is amazing the progress they're making in terms of try, and we'll hear more about it at the Roundtable uh event on um Tuesday night or Wednesday night, whenever that's coming up. Um, but amazing in terms of um what they're trying to do with um both voucher, getting additional voucher opportunities for project based vouchers. Uh, and it all, all relates to the conversion of the federal properties to the local properties. So they're doing some really good work there. We'll hear more about it.
Okay.
I don't really have anything. I think Carrie covered most of it with her management's report.
Okay, well, I, um, of course, I'm strongly anticipating the D I Commission meeting tomorrow night. I'm very curious what will come from this. Um, the committee meeting where there was a discussion of uh the food service program at the school, which is pretty amazing. Um, I think we should all head down there and have our meals.
Lunch, right.
Um, that uh, the, the participation among students is up. Uh, they get food from local farms, including Verrel Farm. The uh, the recipes, the ingredients and everything are just, uh, you know, far more kind of I would almost say grown up than, and, and diverse um than the offerings that I ever remembered having in a school. Um, more sobering was the uh youth risk behavior survey results that were reviewed. Um, so uh, you know, it, it, while in some areas, uh, there have been general improvements. Um, for example, in substance abuse, uh, but in others, and, and in risky behaviors like um like um, you know, sexual activity at earlier ages and things like this.
Hmm.
But um, there is a tremendous uh trouble of uh depression, mental health issues.
That's the report that we saw last week in our materials.
The, I don't.
No, that was hazard mitigation. No.
Yeah.
That was a different.
Right, that's a hazard mitigation report. That's about environmental issues. This is about.
The board of, when we talked about.
Oh, the Board of Health. No, that was uh.
About.
That's opioid.
Yeah, the opioid.
That was a community wide opioid response.
We got two reports.
But this is, uh, they annually take this survey of the students and, and track on an ongoing basis. They do change up some of the questions, but they do keep other questions for consistency sake and um, the trends, you know, again, in some areas were good, in other areas, they're very concerning. So um, and it was a very extensive review. Um, then there, uh, I think the other thing that I was pretty disappointed about was in the, the public school budget discussion. Um, you know, that there is this new capital plan and that the sense of the discussion was that the public schools should not be responsible for sustainability investments. In essence, that that should be on the town, it should not be on the schools. Um, and so that they should be removed from any of their capital planning or anything. Now. Now, I would have to say that, you know, on an individual basis. Some of the things that were in that particular capital plan might have, you know, been a question mark. But when I think about just general capital improvements, that sustainability should be a factor. And in particular, you know, we talk about the values of the town and especially the, what we want to model for our students. I think it's a critical element in, in any investments that we're making on, in the schools. So I was disappointed at the tenor of the discussion and, and, uh, just that, that sense that somehow this was not a school responsibility or interest in that somehow, because, you know, the, the, the finance committee was putting pressure on them that this should be the response. I, I don't.
So they're, they want to carve out sustainability investments, but not other capital items.
That's right. That's the target. Yeah.
I got it.
So, um, I, that's the end of my report for this week. So I guess we're done. We have completed everything else at eight twenty one. Oh. If you have a public comment, either step right up, the, the throng of the public that's in the room. Or, uh, anyone online who would use the raise hand feature and unmute yourself. I am not seeing a, oh, I do see. All right. Pamela Drit.
So, uh, who actually is allowed to march in the uh, Patriot's Day Parade now?
That's not anything under the jurisdiction of the select board. So I don't, I don't have the answer personally.
Okay. And it is the, well, okay, I'll stop asking about that. I had other questions, but I can't remember. So thank you. Pamela Drit, thirteen cocker green.
Okay.
I have a question, Matt. We got some letters recently about the railroad quiet zone. The railroad quiet zone that's being challenged. And is there something, should we put that on, how, how should we respond to that? Can we write a letter?
The board certainly can. We have reached out to the legislative delegation to, to talk about that. And we were going to send something, um, at a staff level. But if, if the board was interested in, in taking that up, we could draft something for the board to send as well.
Well, is, isn't there a lawsuit pending that was mentioned in that correspondence?
There, there was. Is that something that you would like us to put on the agenda for the 24th?
I guess we could discuss it. We could certainly put it as an item and, and if there's something to do, we. Right. Look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'd like to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty three PM. Thank you.